This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. This meeting, this open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectment is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, you can dial 1-408-650-3123 using access code 235235861. The public can also join via computer at www.global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the agenda posted. With that, we will rise for the pleasure of allegiance. So for public comments, first we have remotely, Doreen Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry I can't be there in person, but I do have to get to a 7:00 PM meeting. But I wanted to take a minute really to sincerely congratulate you on your last meeting and your last meeting as you chair the Board of Selectmen. I know for sure at times it can be a thankless job, but we do it because we care, and that showed in each and every one of your meetings, each and every one of the votes that you took. I know you've certainly had a challenging chairmanship with a four-member board. There's a reason that there are five members, and I have always believed that anyone who comes before the board should have a full complement of the board to have a vote taken. So you know, your hands were a little bit tied there, but you did a great job as chairman. I thank you for your service as one who's been there. And again, congratulations. Each, each one of your meetings truly showed that you truly care about Auburn. So congratulations as you move on.
Thank you very much, Ms. Goodrich. All right, and we have Ed Casanovic.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I truly wanted to thank you for your leadership and your guidance since being elected to the board. It's much appreciated. And I know I speak on behalf of our former town manager Julie Jacobson and our assistant town manager Dory Vecchio, who truly appreciates the value you brought to the board. You are a true professional, and the decisions that you have made through the years, I know were done in the best interest of our residents in the community. You've always made yourself available to town administration, and you've listened and you've heard the issues and you helped rectify the problem. So much thanks, dear. And finally, thank you for being a friend. I want to wish you and your family good luck and happiness in your future endeavors, and feel free to come visit anytime, although we always have an open door. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'll address this real quick myself. These past three years have been phenomenal. It's been an honor and pleasure serving with you guys, with past members as well, Doreen Goodrich, Lionel Berthum, Tristan Liliberty. Even when we don't, even when we don't agree on everything, we're always able to have spirited conversation and argument, and I appreciate you guys for that. So thank you. Town administration, we are such a damn lucky town to have you guys. You guys are really top-notch. I've seen it firsthand. Believe me, I've looked at things with a critical eye. I'd be critical in explaining spaces where I felt it was needed. We're a really well-run town government, and it's from the top all the way down to the bottom, department heads all the way to the bottom, just phenomenal. So thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you guys. This has been a tough decision for me. I am a loyal guy, so not choosing not to run again was hard for me to do. You know, my mother was always very much involved in town. I wanted to continue that, and I wanted to show my daughters too the importance of, you know, standing up and running and helping out your community. But somewhere during the middle of it all, nobody prepares you for this as a dad. This is an honest, honest answer here. I lost the title as daddy and became dad somewhere along the line, and you know, you just, you realize that time is fleeting, and if I were to run again, my oldest would be graduating at the time when my next term would be over. So for me, at this time, it was, it was the right decision. But I do love this, so I'm sorry, guys, I might be back at some point in the future. But thank you very much. Thank you. All right, moving on to public hearings, presentations. We have Agenda Item 3A, 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC, 793 Southbridge Street, Auburn. We have a change of officer-director LLC managers. Do we have anyone presenting on that matter?
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Pizzano. I'm here on behalf of the 99 restaurants. It's just a change of officers' application. There are no changes to the restaurant operations. The manager is staying the same. It's just a change at the corporate level.
Sorry, we are having trouble hearing you right at the start. If I could just have you restart that, but just one second. Do we have a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Just, Mr. Chairman, just so you know, Sarah is with us.
Oh, she, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was a little late. Took me a minute to get logged in.
Should we do a roll call vote for attendance then, since we have somebody remotely?
Yes.
Okay. All right. My apologies, we're going to back off the public hearing real quick. So, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Okay, so now we have our roll call. All right, my apologies, a little rough start there. So back to the 99 restaurants, if we could reopen that.
That's why we did the roll call, I thought.
The roll call was for attendance, under the rules.
Oh, oh, all right.
Yeah.
Okay. You're right on it. I will make a motion to open the hearing.
Okay. Motion in a second. All those in favor? Mr. Carpenter?
I gotta do that roll call. Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. All right, my apologies, Elizabeth, if you could just start again.
Sure. My name is Elizabeth Pizzano. I am from Upton, Cornell, and Devlin. Counsel on behalf of the 99 restaurants. This is just a change of officers' application. There are some LLC managers leaving and ones have been added at the corporate level. There are no changes to the manager of record and no changes to the restaurant. All the operations are remaining the same. It's just a change at the corporate level.
Okay. All right, any questions from the board members? And town administration?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And do we have any public comment on the matter? And seeing none, do we have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Motion in a second. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. And do we have a further motion on the application?
I'll make a motion that we approve the changes subject to our typical language.
Okay. Motion in a second. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. It is a vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. All right, moving on to 3B, we have change of manager, Apple New England LLC for Applebee's Neighborhood Grill and Bar located at 680 Southbridge Street in Auburn, Massachusetts. And again, do we have a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Do we have anyone presenting on this matter?
Mr. Williams? My name's Paul Williams. I'm the new general manager of Applebee's.
Good evening.
I became the general manager six weeks ago, and we're just changing the general manager at the restaurant. Nothing else is changing.
Okay. All right, any questions from the board members? Seeing none. Town administration?
No concerns, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And do we have any public comment questions on the matter? Seeing none. Do we have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Do we have a further motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the change subject to our customary language.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Thank you, Mr. Williams. It's all set.
Thank you. You have a good night.
You too. All right, there are no communications, so moving on to Agenda Item 5, Select Board Items. We have common VIC license and hotel motel license applications for the Comfort Inn located at 426 Southbridge Street in Auburn. You guys should have the information in the packets from DCG. Any questions on this application?
Just a general question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
This is just a change of ownership. So this, if I followed the thread correctly, somebody purchased it, so we just need to reissue the licenses. There's no change to their services.
That was my understanding. I do not believe we have anyone presenting on this matter. Was that your understanding?
That was my understanding.
No. Actually, I'm here. My name is Sabina Rizby. Good evening. I am actually the owner of the Comfort Inn, the new owner of the Comfort Inn. And we have not closed yet because we are waiting for these licenses. It is a change of ownership, exactly as stated.
Did you hear the question from my colleague in regard to any change of services or operations?
No. The only thing is this time husband and I that will be operating this hotel, and we're actually coming out of Minnesota. We reside in Minnesota here, and we have a couple of choice properties already, so we're very familiar with all the rules and rights of the franchise agreement in the city and the state and the town.
So it's free. Mr. Chairman, so you want a common VIC license. Are you just providing breakfast? Is there any sort of accommodation for meetings, things like that?
Um, as of right now, the hotel does not provide a hot continental breakfast. I know that they're doing a prepackaged, and we've applied for our food license as well. As far as change of any services or accommodation changes, there are none. It's going to be as is.
Okay.
It's a very small property, so you know, physically renting rooms and providing a hot breakfast, there's no pool, there's no other guest amenities that would be utilized at this time.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. It's my to say the previous owner did have a common VIC license as well. No further questions on the board's end? Town administration?
No.
I'd see none. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the license for the common VIC rule subject to our typical language.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. That is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You as well.
Thank you. Bye.
Moving on to Agenda Item 5B, we have gift acceptances. I'm excited about this one. So we have fire rescue, we have a donation for ambulance and equipment, and I believe we do have some presenters here this evening.
Mr. Chairman, just before we move on, I didn't make a motion on the hotel license, just on the common VIC. I thought we'd want to take those separately. I had two. I know, I, when I looked through it, I was like, oh, there's a second one. So they have a common VIC and a hotel license. So I'm happy to make a motion for it.
Oh, my apologies, I thought you would include both of those. Yeah, if you could, please.
I would make a motion that we approve the hotel license subject to our standard language.
Okay.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Okay. My apologies, Chairman.
Let's start with them.
Sure.
And I see we have Mr. Shinet here this evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good. I have Donna Bacon and Donna Garland here with me.
Good evening.
Hi.
Okay, we are the executors, personal representatives, okay, for the estate of Deborah Farnham Vergilio. And I have a letter here to the board that I'd like to, I'd like to read.
Absolutely.
To the Select Board, this is regarding the donation of an ambulance. Deborah Farnham Vergilio was a longtime Auburn resident and a descendant of the Kingdom family of Auburn. Upon her passing, she left instructions to her executors to distribute a sum of money that will purchase a new ambulance for the town of Auburn in memory of her parents, Earl W. Farnham Jr. and Marion Kingdom Farnham. As co-executives and personal representatives, we, Joseph Shinet, Donna Garland, Donna Bacon, would like the estate to assume the responsibilities for all of the invoices for the purchase of this new ambulance. The commitment is for the sum up to $525,000 as concurred by Chief Coleman. As the town receives the invoices, the estate will submit funds to cover the expenses. Okay, the new ambulance should have a plaque in memory of her parents. Any questions?
Thank you.
Don't thank us. Thank, thank Debbie.
Thank you, Debbie. That, that is absolutely wonderful and certainly needed. I'm sure Chief Coleman can speak to that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to thank, you know, first and foremost, Deborah Vergiglio for her generous donation. When Mr. Shinet came into the office shortly after her passing and told me the instructions that were left within her will, you know, I was, I was blown away. You know, this is not the first time that we have been willed money to our organization, and I'm proud to say it's, it's, you know, because of the impact that we leave on people, you know, especially our elderly residents in their time of need. It's just an amazing, it's an amazing donation. It's, it's an unbelievable amount of money. And, and to commit it for that purpose, it's a wonderful thing. I do want to thank the executors, although this is my first time tonight going to meet two of you. Mr. Shinet kept me abreast of a lot of the challenges that you faced over the close to a year to get that estate settled. It was a lot of work, and I, and I just, I want to thank you and say that you guys did an amazing job on, on executing that, that duty. As Mr. Shinet mentioned, you know, this ambulance is being donated by Mrs. Vergiglio, and there will be a plaque installed when the truck goes in service that will say, in memory, this ambulance was donated by Deborah Farnham Vergiglio in memory of her parents, Earl W. Farnham Jr. and Marion Kingdom Farnham. That will be a plaque that will be in the ambulance that will sit there for all to see in terms of where that generous gift came from. That's all I have. Just thank you very much.
All right, excellent. Anything from, from the board? Yes?
I just have one question. Do we have to accept it with the plaque? I mean, I don't consider it infrastructure, so whatever you do, that's fine. I just don't want to accept a gift with a requirement that anything be named. Whatever you choose to do, because it doesn't, I don't believe it falls into the infrastructure, which would be a board decision if that was going to happen. I don't consider this that. Yeah, I, I will just say that it was written in the will that the gift of the ambulance, the fully equipped ambulance, it was specifically named in the will that there be a plaque affixed somewhere on the inside of the truck that said it was a donation on behalf. I would concur. We went through this when we were talking about the Chief Bell Human Training Facility. I would not consider this to be infrastructure. This is, this is a rolling stock vehicle that does have a life expectancy, you know, of 10 years. So I don't think that this fits the intent of what... And again, the ambulance isn't being named in honor. The plaque says donated by. So I don't think it meets the criteria of what the, the board's policy is on naming infrastructure.
Mr. Williams?
All right, just to say thank you.
Yeah.
Very generous.
I put it on the side of it.
I agree. I would love to say thank you as well.
All right, and with that, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept with gratitude and that a letter be prepared for the chairman's signature.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Carpenter?
I'm going to abstain.
Mr. Chambers? Okay. Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. It is a vote. Thank you very much again. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have a donation from the Department of Public Works, the amount of $1,000.
I'll make a motion that we accept with gratitude and then a letter be prepared for the chair's signature.
Right, second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Okay. All right, moving on to proclamations and recognitions. We have a request for the Eagle Scouts for a proclamation, and you should have a letter enclosed in your packets. Okay, did everyone get that, the information submitted?
Yes.
Do you have any questions, concerns, comments?
Just, just a general question through you, Mr. Chairman. Has DPW and Park seen this, and are they okay with, you know? It'd be nice to have their sign off because they're going to be kind of responsible for making sure it's installed and things like that.
I believe this was already done, correct?
Yeah, I believe it has. I, I, I don't know if Joanna was going... Oh, Joanna's on the, on the board.
Good evening.
Hello.
I'm sorry, I, I wasn't sure what was on the... Are these bat houses?
Yes.
Yes, so we, we've been involved with, with the Boy Scout and, and his family, and, and they've been keeping us updated on the, on the project.
Okay. But this is a new, sorry, Mr. Chairman, through you. This is a new application, or is, I know we did have one earlier where somebody was putting bat boxes, but I understood this to be a new request? Am I mistaken?
I don't believe this is...
I'm sorry, I'm reading through the letter, and it looks like they're just looking for recognition for him for completing the project.
Yeah, I believe this was the previous...
Okay.
Yeah, I was a little confused because this is a proclamation.
Through the chair, I think that there was a separate bat project. This is bat and helmet. I know baseball, it gets confusing when it was the animals. This one was, I believe, completed for bats and helmets in the dugout area.
The holders.
Okay. I missed the bus on that. I don't see any way here where they're asking for a proclamation, but I'm happy to make a motion that we issue a proclamation to, to the gentleman for doing that work.
Okay, we have a motion.
One second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Okay. And moving on, we have a letter of resignation, excuse me, from the Finance Committee, and that went to the town manager.
Thank you. We were informed that Diane Byrne, for a number of reasons, is not interested in being reappointed. That being the case, there is a process where the Board of Selectment appoints a finance committee member. So we wanted to get this moving along so we would be in a position, hopefully, to have a new member on board upon her last day. So we will see what application we have filed. We'll advertise, and we'll keep you plugged in in terms of conducting interviews in a future meeting.
Just a quick question, Mr. Chairman. Is this an at-large seat or is this a precinct seat?
Do you remember what precinct she was in, Diane? I, I don't know offhand.
Oh, she's in one.
One?
Yes.
She's in one.
Precinct.
But we have to look at the composition of the members to see what, what precincts are available.
Okay. All right, moving on to town manager items. You didn't need any vote on that or any authorization.
No.
All right, we have an update on the biohazardous waste remidiator by the Fire Department. Was actually able to see it in person this, this weekend at the Chamber events.
Good evening.
Excellent. Good evening. Yeah, this is some very exciting news. I know in the past, Mr. Carpenter has asked me about an update. Honestly, I thought we'd come to the board and let you know where we're at with it. We took delivery of the machine a few weeks ago. They came, they installed it. We went through a training class, and we're just about ready to open it up to the public. We've been working with the Board of Health here, getting some flyers ready and getting the message out to the community that we're going to be taking the needles. So most of the details are ironed out, but the machine works great. We've done some test runs on it, and we just wanted to give you an update and really happy about this project.
So it, it'll take needles and other biohazardous materials and put it down to like a dust dump?
Turns it, turns it into about maybe, about that size, maybe a quarter of an inch. It grinds it all up, puts it into a little bucket, and then when you're done, you take it, you can throw it in the regular trash. Sterilizes everything and grinds it. It's pretty neat.
It's pretty cool, yeah.
Yeah, pretty neat. So I think in the end, it's going to be a great cost savings to the town. It's going to be a great community project for everybody to come in and drop off their needles that are in town.
Excellent, excellent. Any questions from the board members?
I do. I need to know if this is something that I can recycle or if it does have a needle. So I don't want to throw it in the trash, but it is self-contained. So I knew you were coming tonight, so I figured I'd bring it, and you could look at it and let me know. You don't have to do it right now.
Sure. Yeah, it would be something that we would take and we'd put it in the pile and put it in and grind it in the end.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
If I may... Sorry, I just have a quick question. Are there going to be needle boxes around town, or should people bring them to our headquarters?
So the, the plan is that they are going to bring them to the fire headquarters where we have a drop box, the same one that was in the CVS at the time. They'll come in, they'll have to show their ID that shows they live in town, they'll put the needles in the drop box, and then we'll take care of it from there.
Wonderful, thank you.
Ms. Coyle?
It, it gives us a chance to, to refresh the program that we had very successfully for about eight years. We had to take a hiatus for the past year to try to figure out how we could do this and, and keep it local, sustainable, and figuring out how we maintain it and get the supplies for it. We are over the top, so excited. This is a great thing for the residents and our community.
Excellent. Okay.
Well, I have, you have a quick update on the community preparedness that we used with ARPA. All the DFIBs have come in. They have been placed throughout town, other than a couple that are, should be next week. And then all the go-bags for the schools have been in place, other than two, which will also be placed next week, so that has moved forward. As the equipment has come in, we've put that in place, so.
Excellent. Yes.
Is that with the remote notification on the maintenance of it, right?
Correct. Those are the DFIBs that have the Wi-Fi connected. We're still working with IT to get that part up and running, but at least the machines are all in place. And then IT's working with EMS coordinator to get that all done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Progress, I love it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on, we have an update on the housing production.
So I know Dalia was instrumental in making this happen. I know we heard the board at the last meeting. Actually, heard from Mr. Corrine, from his public comments. We were able to work out a mailing that is gonna be attached to our solid waste billing in early June that will contain and make reference to the actual survey. So the outreach is gonna hit roughly, how many, six thousand? Seven thousand households. I know we sent out about seventy-two hundred tax bills. I think the solid waste may be a little little less than that, but certainly that's at a cost of about two hundred and four dollars, so we were able to do that without doing a separate mailing. We talked to Kellyanne Ryan, who sends out our tax bills. We've worked it out with him. And the grant that we got for the housing production plan itself will absorb the total cost of that mailing, so no cost to the taxpayers.
Excellent. Any questions? Moving on, we have an update on the development agreement for Perry Place. I see that the applicant is here this evening.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. Jim Varikas, Perry Place. So I wanted to go through the last couple of things that I guess the board was interested, I think, in discussing as far as roadways and everything. Some questions.
Do you have that list that they, we kind of went through last time by any chance?
I did not bring it with me. They have it here. Talking about the sidewalks, road maintenance?
Yeah. So as far as...
Would you refer to the items on that?
So I guess to go down the list, as far as sidewalks and everything, I know you guys were interested in doing sidewalks going down Perry Place. So we did look at the width, and it's a variable width road. So it would be very complicated to put sidewalks going down those roads. I think it was sidewalks, drainage, and then a top coat over those. There would be a lot of damage that would actually be caused to the neighbors of going, you know, in front of there, taking the property, going into their driveways and whatnot. Is that something that you guys are stuck on as far as a sidewalk going all the way down? I guess kind of more here to pick your brain, to see where you're at with this thing, if it's worth trying to take a look at it, if this is kind of more of a line of we want you to say no and go directly to the state, or if it's more of a, you know, we want to work together kind of thing. Just to be completely blunt and honest.
Anybody who knows me knows that I don't like to know.
You don't what?
Probably the best thing to do is set up a sidewalk, try and find availability, and we can discuss it.
Because the only way that we could possibly do something, and I did have a meeting with the water department, is obviously reduce down to what we're gonna do for them, right? So there's obviously a certain number that we've allotted to doing what we call off-site improvements. The issue that we had was obviously kind of coming out of the gate with that water. We're doing what we did for the water department, kind of blew, really blew our budget of what we can do. So I did go down to the water department, had a conversation with him and told him that, you know, we're probably not gonna be able to do everything that we said that we were gonna do for him. He said he was gonna speak to the board, didn't really give me one feedback one way or the other, right? Obviously wasn't overly thrilled about it. So I think to do drainage and to do all that, it's just gonna be totally out of the question of what's even possible, what's even, you know, manageable on that site or in those roads, those exist, you know, the existing roads. This is obviously not brand-new roads that we're building here. So we have to work with what we have, too. So.
Now, when you looked at it, from Auburn Street, are you talking left side or right side? Or did you look at...
So if you were heading to, if you were coming from our community, we assume it's more on the left-hand side is where we put, you know, a sidewalk. I'm assuming you're not looking for sidewalks going down both ways. It would just be a major disturbance, right?
I think we'd be looking for one side. I just didn't know what side you looked at and if one side had more of an impact than the other.
I think to go, if you're leaving the community, coming out, stay on the left-hand side, you know, would probably be less of an impact than going to the, than on the right-hand side. The major issue was gonna be, as it was brought up, was drainage. Right now, there's no drainage in that road. In order to get drainage in that road and then get it to discharge, obviously, it's just, it would be almost impossible to do. We'd have to have infiltrators and, I mean, that would be a major job, which really wouldn't be possible. I mean, obviously, everything's always possible, but to a certain number.
Engineers always tell me, with enough money, anything is possible. I've never quite believed that. So my feeling is, and I don't know what the other board members think, and obviously through the manager asking the DPW director to, you know, let's have a sidewalk, show me, you know, what challenges you have and, you know, we'll have a discussion. Ultimately, for me anyways, just speaking for myself, you know, they need to be able to walk on their street. And I don't think anybody's gonna disagree that your development is going to put major traffic, as you had very much just explained, on a road that is not suitable for that kind of traffic. So, and we do have a policy about trying to improve roads. So, you know, that is something that I think is important and, you know, is a win for the neighbors. But, you know, I would hold off until we do a sidewalk and see what, see what the challenges are.
I believe there was proposed road improvements as well and saying that the sidewalk addition would change the requirements for filtration and drainage.
I think the drainage thing would become a bigger issue. That would be something that's pretty major to get the drainage in there. Obviously, right now, everything's running off. It's, you know, there is no drainage in the road. It's an old country road, which is not an uncommon thing.
Yeah, I think it drains. I think it's just wet.
There's that one section where there's, you know, the flood zone where we're lifting it up. It's not wet. It's not, you know, you're not driving down the road and it's squishing all over the place. It is a public road that does act as a public road, so it's not... The road's not terrible. It's not great. The section that we initially, from Pearl Street on, that's like an old oil and sand mix. I believe it's really not asphalt, asphalt.
So I guess if we're to do a walk, I would want to know what that difference in calculation means, because I do think there's gotta be some work that needs to get done regardless of the sidewalks, so whatever that offset or cost differential, I think is...
In what, in what way?
So if you're improving it and you're gonna, you're just gonna let it run off, but you have to raise it up, so you can't just let it run off. Otherwise, you're flooding out the people on the right-hand side if you were leaving, right? Because it all stays there. Like, and again, I'm not trying to do it, and I know it's gonna go through everything.
I think our impervious number would stay the same. In the runoff, it's still going the same direction that it's going in now. I don't think we'd create any more. We were not looking to create any more impervious and create more issues. It could be, if anything, going down, there's only that one section where we did plan on raising, which, you know, that one, is that what you were saying, is that one section for the flood zone?
So in my head, I'm not, I don't have the whole project in here. I'm not trying to overstep what zoning and all that is, but I'm just saying if, if you're saying that it really can't be done, but you're gonna do improvements anyway, I want to know why some improvements are acceptable and others aren't, and what that is, so. Again, not the engineer, not trying to tell you what has to get done there. Again, I'm a big proponent of the sidewalks. I would like to work with you guys on that, because I think it's gonna be a cost to the taxpayers at the end of the day, once we start having a lot more traffic on that road. I mean, it's, you're right, it is narrow, varying width. And I do see people walking that road currently, so with increased traffic, I just see a lot more accidents, more potential for accidents.
I have to say, in my personal opinion, and I'm sorry I couldn't be there tonight, that the water district plan is going through no matter what, even if you, like, additional fundings don't go to it. And I like the idea of the sidewalks, but I'm not sold that it's it's to fold up this project. I honestly think the water district is more important. It affects ninety percent of the town instead of the less than ten percent that live in that area. I get it. I would like them to be safe as well. But as far as saving the taxpayers' money, I think the better use of that money is going to a project that's already gonna happen. And I, you know, and I've talked to some taxpayers and some people agree and some people don't, but I personally think funding something that we know is happening is a better use of that money.
I agree.
That's why we're here. So I, so do we want to go to the next item? I just want to keep focus here for everybody. I feel like the developer's here saying, he's asking for guidance on specifically what's needed. And I don't want to put words in your mouth, but is this gonna be feasible based on the new asks or is it not? Okay, so.
Yeah, that's basically what I'm looking for. Like, you know, is it, am I running down where no matter what I, what we do, what we're gonna say, we're gonna get a no? So is it, is that the case, or is it the fact that, you know, we can work together to try and accomplish this together? Is it really all, yeah, exactly.
Very important.
Exactly.
Okay. So we're gonna look to arrange a sidewalk. Is that, that's fine for board member going to sidewalk, but do you just have you?
We would just post it, just like you would on planning board for a meeting.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we can schedule that. What's the next item that we were looking at?
I think that's really the biggest one. There was that, I mean, there was something in there as far as, you know, plowing the roadways. We just, I mean, we can't. That's just for liability reasons and whatnot. We literally just can't, but...
That was discussed in our meeting as well, and town administration felt the same, that possibly bonding and having imperperity maintenance of a road that's already a public road calls into question the legality and if it's something that's even possible. I don't know the answer to that.
But is Perry Place a public road?
Perry Place is not a public road at this point. I don't know if you'd be seeking, you wouldn't know. You're not making, you're not just seeking to make it a public way.
We would really leave it up to the abusers, whatever they want us to do. You know, with the section that's private, we could, you know, absolutely work on something with them as far as plowing it. If they want us to bring it up to subdivision standards, is that something that the town required? We could do, we could work something like that, too. Obviously, if we're coming in and we're paving and widening and doing everything, it would make, it would make sense logically to have it accepted, but it would be more of a...
Mr. Carpenter, you said you wanted to have Pearl and Perry also maintained?
Not necessarily maintained.
Okay.
The sidewalk to go on, yes.
Okay, fine.
I didn't mean plowing. I just meant for this part, that is the private way, that they take responsibility for the cost of maintaining that, because again, these abutters did not ask.
Okay.
They should not be, you know...
Well, you'd be seeking to build that according to specs of the town, if you're gonna be submitting it to be come approved by the town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I would assume we're gonna be doing all this. We might as well bring it up and get it. You know, typically, whatever we propose, the abutters usually go against, no matter what we say, even if it is a benefit, but you, I would assume that the town would want us to bring it up to the standards and you would assume the neighbors would want to do it, but we don't completely own that roadway. We do it with the neighbors, so the neighbors would have to go along with it as far as getting it accepted, I believe, or... Not really sure exactly how that end of it works. We have the rights to improve it and do everything and pass and use, but we don't pass and... Right, I think as far as getting it together, I think that would be something the neighbor, I hope the neighbors have to do.
Yep. Were there any other matters or was that the big one?
That's the biggest one. Really? Because that's really the, that's really the biggest by far, right? Because if we can't work that out, then it's just not worth it.
And to be clear, there would be, it's either sidewalks or the contribution towards the redundant well project.
Correct, correct. And that's the conversation that I had with Greg. Obviously, I didn't come here without speaking with Greg first. I just said, Greg, you know, we'd have to look at whatever they're asking us to do, whatever that number is, and deduct it from whatever, you know, we're doing for him. So I don't know what would be left and what we could do, but, you know, we're kind of at a number right now, so.
All right. All right. Any other matters that are worth, again, for clarity purposes?
Just as I said, if it's something that is agreed to and the ZBA, however, we need to assign a number to it and figure out how those dollars, they don't go away just because ZBA says, I don't think that's a good idea. Those dollars need to flow to the town in some acceptable way, so. That's a big point for me anyways. I can only speak for myself, so, but...
Not speaking to the Perry Place private portion.
So. I usually say things just to get to a no, so I'm trying to strengthen it, so that's why I'm doing it. I don't just, if I wanted to say no, trust me.
You've said it before.
I would've said it three weeks ago. I am on the ballot in a week, so, you know, there are some people who, there might be votes in that for me, but that's not why I sit in the seat to get votes, you know, when I'm making decisions. So I don't typically do things just to get to a no at some point.
Anything else, Ms. Ruffley?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so I believe we'll just put this off until we can schedule the site.
Is this something that's fairly quick as far as timing wise? How quickly would that?
All depends on the majority of who's gonna do a site visit on the board.
It would have to be after the election. I'm gonna be honest with you.
Okay. When is the election?
Sixty. Oh, wait, sixty tomorrow, yeah.
So it can be scheduled thereafter?
All right, that sounds good. And I'll go through, Ed?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we have no tabled items. We have no select board items. Did the members have a chance to review the minutes? Sharon didn't email them over separately today. I told her that I felt that was proper. But if you did have a chance to review, we can certainly put it off. It's your fault.
No, I thought they were fine. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, so we'll accept those minutes as presented, and do we have a motion to adjourn?
Before we do that, we might want to say something nice about you. Mr. Jim, come on, it's your last meeting. And you said you might come back, so I might be here.
That's more of a warning.
I'm not afraid. I do just want to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I certainly enjoyed serving with you and, you know, I'm absolutely understand why you're choosing, and I think that's a wise choice for anybody. I think it's very hard for anybody who has children to do any sort of government service, because that's really your full-time job. So I wish you well and maybe we'll see you in the future. I say to every other member, and Mrs. Goodrich is taking me up on it, don't be a stranger.
I won't be. Thank you.
I'm sure we'll...
I too quickly got one to say thank you for serving, and it's been a pleasure to get to know you and be on the board with you.
Thank you.
I just fully expect we'll work together in other capacities. Not leaving town. I know you deeply care about it, so we'll see you in other capacities. And I appreciate your time on the board, this board and other boards, and all your other commitments. And I encourage everyone else to get involved, and I think you're a role model for that. And hopefully, more people will follow in those footsteps and we get more action.
Thank you. All right, thank you, thank you. All right, and with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Ruffley?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. That is a meeting. Good meeting, guys.
Thank you.